Okay, good evening. I would like to call the committee of the whole meeting to order and ask for approval of the agenda.
Hello.
Thank you, councillor Berger. And seconded by councillor Loggins. All those in favor, motions carried. Okay, so we're moving right into our presentations today. We're going to begin with the primary health group. Welcome and thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. My name is Lynda Neera and I will be making the presentation tonight. I'm a member of the Primary Healthcare Services Working Group and a longstanding, relatively longstanding, I suppose, volunteer with the Community Health Initiative. I'd just like to introduce my colleagues before I start. Emma Isaac, she is a primary care developer with Island Health and also is the board chair of the Suk Region Community Health Initiative. And many of you know Marlene Berry. Marlene is the chair of the Suk Region Volunteer Centre and also a board member of Chi. Okay. Just to give you a bit of background on the Primary Healthcare Services Working Group, it was formed in December 2013 and it built on the work of a previous group, which was the Mayor's Advisory Panel on Community Health and Social Initiatives. And I believe that that met for one year prior to the Primary Healthcare Services Working Group being established. We had a one-year term and the aim was to address gaps in the healthcare system. And the membership, actually, the beginning of the Primary Healthcare Services Working Group came out of a community forum that was held in Suk in November of 2013. And at that meeting, we decided that something really needed to be done in terms of addressing collectively healthcare issues. So the former mayor agreed to be part of a committee along with Island Health, the South Island Division of Family Practice, which involves, it's a membership organization and it involves about 97% of all the family physicians on South Island, which includes Sanwich Peninsula, Machozen, as well as Suk and Callwood. The West Coast Family Medical Clinic, we had two physicians actually volunteer to be involved. And Suk Family Resource Society, one person with that. And also with the Community Health Initiative and the Suk Region Volunteer Centre. So it was really a multi-stakeholder group right from the start. And the people that were involved were people that were able to have some influence within their own respective organizations, as well as be linked to other groups such as Doctors of BC, for example. The South Island Division has good connections with them. We believe as a working group, or we believe that many factors contribute to the healthy communities, not just things like good sidewalks and recreation, but also availability of high-quality healthcare services. And we believe as well that the best healthcare services are designed by community leaders, residents, local service providers, and other stakeholders, working together to make sure the best information is put to the best use by the best people. And certainly, our one-year experience suggests that mayor and council have a very vital role to play. And in fact, the former mayor, I think, was instrumental in helping us to achieve many of the goals that we did achieve. Certainly in other jurisdictions, I have been involved personally with the mayors of Central Sanwich, North Sanwich, and Sydney, where they came together around shortage of family physicians. So obviously, the interest in health services and in addressing needs of the community, you know, when the mayor and council take an interest, things begin to move quite positively. So let's take a minute to look at how Suk fares in terms of health service accessibility and quality. This graph, or this figure, rather, shows you the rough breakdown of how many people in Suk do not have a family doctor and do have a family doctor. And we've got over one-quarter that do not have a family doctor at all. And that's not just a family doctor in Suk, because within the 74% figure, you'll have people whose doctors are in Suk and people who are driving quite far to access their medical services. And in fact, there are a small number of people who are actually getting their services in other jurisdictions, like the mainland and also out of province. The current waitlist at the Suk Medical Clinic is estimated to be about 800 patients. So that is an active waitlist. This good news was brought to my attention today that there is going to be a new family physician starting in June of 2015. So there is a complement of seven. Many of them are going to be retiring over the next five years. There is one new one coming in, and there's also going to be a new physician taking over for a retiring physician. But there's still a huge deficit and obviously, a huge waitlist. One of the issues that we focused on as a working group was diagnostic services, x-ray services specifically. Many of you are probably aware that the services are not truly accessible and available. There's services offered two hours per week, twice a week. People have to travel to Langford or farther for x-ray services. There are no ultrasound services in the community, and certainly, other communities that are smaller do have ultrasound services. So certainly, the physicians and the community as a whole would like to see the services extended and improved, and would like to also see some of the other diagnostic services in the community. Housing and care for seniors is also another issue that is a very important one and that needs to be addressed. The first two points just really speak to the growing population of Suk, which all of you are very familiar with. Also, what you may not be familiar with, that it's expected that seniors will make up about 40% of the population in 2026. Again, these are estimates, but, you know, it seems to be a disproportionate growth even relative to the high growth that Suk is anticipating. An air manner expansion has certainly been discussed by the Board of Air Manor and others. It will be required. Other supported living options are also going to be required in Suk. And also, there's a lot of seniors that wish to age in place. And certainly, as I approach those years myself, that's my goal, is to stay put. So there's going to have to be some services available for people that wish to stay at home. And that ranges from services related to keeping their house up, yard services, housekeeping, as well as things like meals, and then personal care when it gets to, when that is required. Other gaps and issues that we've identified, funding of the Integrated Health Network, which currently works out of the medical clinic and consists of a nurse, social worker, and dietitian, was in jeopardy throughout the year of the working group's activity. It has, it is now certain, but these services are only available to clinic patients. So for the 26% of the people that do not have a family doctor at all, and for those people in the 74% that don't have doctors in Suk, at the present time, they're not eligible to get any of the services that are available through these, through these professionals, by these professionals. There's a big gap in terms of health and mental health needs of youth. And the system's also undergoing a number of changes. And it's important, I think, for mayor and council to be involved to help Island Health redesign the system. And if there's any questions, Emma certainly would be happy to address those. So it's very much a time of change presenting opportunities, I think, for involvement of the mayor and council, as well as the community at large. The working group made a start. We talked a little bit about the deficit of physicians. And we have gained access to physician recruitment programs through the South Island Division of Family Practice. And we will be linked in with them throughout, and it will be important to maintain the ties that we have fostered. And we're also had some talk about building on the Chambers recruitment package, and we have reviewed that. And we would like to be able to build something that is tailored for physician recruitment and the recruitment specifically of other healthcare professionals. We have advocated for x-ray services. The former mayor took interest and took the lead, communicating with the current owners, trying to arrange different structures for contracts, et cetera. And we've been successful in getting the cooperation from the South Island Division of Family Practice, who are providing a staff person who will lead a business planning process for the x-ray service here, and will be bringing in master students from the Faculty of Business Administration. So this is, I think, is going to really move things forward. During this period, there was also a secured commitment from Island Health for two additional hospice beds for Air Manor. We have conducted a needs assessment of seniors. Forty-seven seniors participated in in-depth interviews. And these are people that came forward based on newspaper ads indicating that they wished to remain in their own homes, but they were very challenged as they tried to do so. So we looked at what they needed specifically. We received a grant from the South Island Division of Family Practice for this study, and also an independent grant from UBCM for that study. And it's certainly not just a study for the purpose of generating knowledge, although that will be very helpful. We're really looking at designing and developing proposals for service initiatives, some of which will need to be funded, but some of which will also be done by volunteers. We certainly were strong in advocating support for the Integrated Health Network, which, as I mentioned, has now been refunded. And also spent some time initially advocating for the continuation of the rural subsidy for Suk physicians. This subsidy provides low-income coverage for these physicians when they take holidays. There has been great debate about whether or not Suk should be considered rural or not. And in fact, that was one battle that, to date, we have not been successful at. And certainly, for those of us that live out in the communities of Suk and beyond, because again, we're talking about a catchment area for medical services that goes much beyond Suk, we certainly feel like we're far enough away from a city center. So it's, we haven't been successful, as I say, but we haven't stopped fighting as well, and we are getting support through the Doctors of BC with that. I think it's fair to say that we have fostered a new relationship with Island Health. There have been at least two meetings with the board members from Island Health, and close relationship with the acting VP of Planning and Improvement, who was specifically involved in the beds, the additional beds for Air Manor. I think, I hope I demonstrated that there's been some very tangible benefits to date. I think we have been successful in creating a very high-level, multi-stakeholder group that can broker resources and that can also reach out to other people and other groups at a senior level. And certainly, I can say that the working group has contributed to discussions involving Chi and the District of Suk, which resulted in matching grant from Island Health for The recommendation that we have before you is that the committee of the whole, we recommend that the committee of the whole recommend that council appoint a liaison to the Primary Healthcare Services Working Group. I also had a good look at your board package, and so I put a question mark here, could take the form of a select committee. And part of, this group really doesn't belong to anybody. It's a group that got together because of a commitment, a shared commitment to improve healthcare, so it really could rest anywhere. The important part is that the stakeholders that have been involved remain involved. That is our key point. Areas that we hope to pursue in 2015 include ongoing work on the Physician Recruitment Initiative. That includes the recruitment package. Working with South Island Division to provide guidance for the business planning process, which is very important. Working with Island Health to support services for Suk seniors. And that goes all the way from the high-end complex care, right through to the community-based services and to the volunteer services. We want to partner with Island Health to design community services that meet the needs of the residents of Suk, and I think we have made a good start in that regard. We also want to tackle youth healthcare and mental health services, which have always been out there, but some of the other issues have seemed more pressing. And I think there's a need to really look at that issue in the coming year. And we would like to maintain and strengthen the link between the community and the stakeholders responsible for healthcare services. I think there's absolutely no doubt in any of our minds that without the involvement of mayor and council, that our effectiveness will be completely compromised. So we hope that we will have a positive recommendation coming forward from this committee to council. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Any questions from council at this moment? Or councillor Parkinson?
I was just curious, for the rural subsidy, how much do physicians receive to come out here, or do they still receive it?
They've actually stopped the rural subsidy. It's been stopped.
How long ago was that?
I'm just trying to recall. It's at least been a year.
And what were they receiving?
The actual dollar amount, I don't know. It would have been certainly, it was a contract as opposed to a fee-for-service.
Right.
But I know that just from my own past experience as a CEO of the health authority and understanding the mechanism. But yeah, it wasn't a very generous, it wasn't an overly generous amount. It was just a guarantee rather than having to rely on a fee-for-service payment.
I think that's something that should be looked into, coming from Toronto to Suk. Suk is rural.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Other councillors? Councillor Pearson?
Yeah. You touched on a couple of points there, that the catchment area, you know, for the rural communities extends beyond, you know, the boundaries of Suk. So is this, is this extended into the Wannafu electoral area, like the committee itself? And what have we done? What steps have we taken with Mr. Hicks and company out there?
Well, Mr. Hicks, although he didn't attend meetings, he certainly indicated his support in writing for the committee. And when we're looking at rural subsidy, a strong argument was made by the group that since Port Renfrew, all the way out to Port Renfrew is being serviced, that that should be considered. But the committee that was reviewing it, the General Practices Services Commission, GPSC, they just were not, were not moving on it. Yeah.
Other questions? Okay, thank you very much for the presentation. It's certainly been excellent work that's been accomplished since the group formed. At this point, council is just reviewing all the various committees, reforming, we have our strategic planning session coming up in February. So at that time, when the priors are set, we can start looking at forming the committees and finding the right approach. What could happen is that I could attend if you have a meeting before then, in January. I'd be delighted to attend that on behalf of council. And then when the strategic planning session happens, we can look at whether or not it should be standing select, what other support does it need? Is there another councillor that may be interested in attending? And we can flesh that out a bit.
Thank you very much, Mayor Tate.
Thoughts on that? Councillor Parkinson?
I was just curious when you did meet previously.
We met once a month, and it was usually on a Thursday, the third Thursday of the month. But we were very flexible. We tried to accommodate some of the schedules of the physicians that were attending and working around clinics and that kind of thing.
So is it evening meetings or during the daytime?
No, they were daytimes. Yeah, thanks.
They were like Thursdays at nine, because I think I accidentally walked in at one point. So councillor Ray?
Not a question to the speaker, but would it be possible to get a copy of the PowerPoint? I just, there was some really good information in there, and I'd like to have it available.
Absolutely. You have it, so it's certainly free to circulate it.
Thank you.
Okay. So on that note, we could take that action for the present time. If you do have the meeting, to let Bonnie and myself know, and I'll attend that, and then we can, we could take it forward from there in February after the strategic planning's done and we iron out all those pieces. Excellent. Thank you very much for the presentation, both the PowerPoint and the one in our packages. Okay, so the next item is number four, Town Center Sidewalk Update. And we will receive a verbal update from our consultant. Welcome.
Perfect. Pass it around? Oh, man. Yeah, nobody wants to see that. Okay, I guess I'll talk. Good evening. So I'm Nathan Dunlop, the project manager for the Town Center Sidewalk Project, or what's being called the Town Center Sidewalk Project. Just a little bit of history. So council in November of last year awarded or was directed to award the Phase One part of the Town Center Sidewalk Project. That consisted of a sidewalk on the south side of Suk Road from Otter Point, basically to Townsend Road. That was pending approval from MOTI. That has not been achieved to date, so we have not awarded that section of the sidewalk work. After that was tendered, MOT came to the table and notified the district that they were going to be, in short order, resurfacing Suk Road with new asphalt. We took that as an opportunity to get a level of scale that could achieve some cost savings for the district. So that first phase of work was essentially kind of put on hold. And now what we've been working towards has been designing the sidewalk from Otter Point to Church Road. So that's what's underway now. So that's just a little bit of a history there. So we are working with MOT, we're working with the utility companies, and we are working with the consultant for their roundabout there. There we go. So the roundabout there is just in the blue. So that's being done by another consultant. What the district is looking at installing is the purple and blue work, this section here, as well as this section here. There are several advantages to not breaking this into the Phase One, what was originally proposed. Obviously, some cost savings because MOT is going to have a contractor on site doing a major project here. So if we piggyback on their project, they will be tendering the work. They will be handling a lot of the project management, so there's savings there as well. The disruption to the public is minimized because we aren't shutting down the road and impacting traffic and businesses now to do a section. Then three months, four or five months from now, MOT comes back and shuts down the road again to do their upgrades. So we are going to essentially, with this amount of work that we are proposing now, provide a connection, a safe pedestrian connection all the way from Church Road to Otter Point. Like I said, current work, we are working through the detailed design with MOT, coming up with the tender documents. And we are, Suk Road isn't dedicated as a full, or I guess the district has a cross-section that allows for sidewalks on both sides of the road, three-way, three lanes of traffic, bike lanes, et cetera. The current property does not allow for us to build the ultimate cross-section. So we are building it where we can at this point to minimize additional work in the future. But unfortunately, it can't be achieved everywhere. But like I said, we are accounting for that and trying to minimize work in the future and providing a safe, connected walkway all the way at this point. The tendering is planning on happening in March 2015. That's when MOT is tendering the whole package of work, including the district's work. So the district's work will be sort of a subset, subsection of that contract. So they'll have their section, we'll break up our section, and that way, the district will know what we are paying for and what we're getting. So like I said, tender in March 2015, award and construction after that. So I can walk you guys through, I guess, what we're proposing. The section from Otter Point to Townsend Road here is the same format or same section of work that was originally proposed. We're not changing that from what council, I guess, approved back in November. What we are changing is adding this amount of work over here. We're adding a sidewalk on the north side of the road here. We're adding a sidewalk on the south side of the road here. And then this roundabout work will be also constructed. That is, in this contract, it's done by a different consultant, so I can't really comment on that. But I guess if you guys have any questions?
Thank you very much for the presentation. One question I have is, so we have the timeline, tendering March 2015. Roughly, when would you anticipate awarding and construction to start and be finished by? I know that it's a different consultant doing that group, but I think it would just be helpful to have a sense of what the timeline might look like.
Sure. It's actually, would be MOT awarding the contract. I would suspect, and again, I have to caution, this is an MOT contract, they control the timing. I would, I would guess, if they tender at March, it would probably be awarded likely in May, with construction starting that summer.
Oh.
But again, it's an MOT contract, so I, that's just, if they want to get it done right away, that's kind of the timeframe you're looking at.
Okay. Councillor Berger?
Yes, thank you. I just have a quick question, and again, this is on the MOT side of it. But do you have an indication, or do we have an indication yet, of what portion and how much of the road they're resurfacing, like from where to where? Did they give you any indication? Obviously, that section, because we're holding off. But do we know how far they're?
I don't know the full extent, to be honest. No. I know they are, they are doing it from Otter Point to Church. Beyond that, I think they are beyond that, but I, I don't know the full extent.
Does our staff have an indication?
Mr. Howie?
When we met with the minister at UBCM, they did indicate that they intend to do some work, not downtown, but from Kangaroo to the fore lane. We haven't seen that in writing yet, but they did say that they were looking at that.
So they didn't give us any indication of the town center and how far they would be expanded?
No, and I think it's mostly, well, it's mostly the section between Church and Otter Point, but we haven't seen the full extent of that yet.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Ray, then councillor Pearson?
Thank you, your worship. A question for Ms. Nelson, possibly. Just coming off of Suk Road on to Otter Point Road, which is district property, there's a significant problem at that intersection with how the road is built and curves and dips. Do we know, or could we explore, if they're going to be doing it to Otter Point, that we can manage that curve, that turn onto Otter Point as well?
MOTI's work would be just up to the edge of Otter Point Road, but it would obviously have to tie to Otter Point Road, but they won't be touching anything on Otter Point Road.
So my question is, is it, can it be something that we can look at? Because that actually is fairly dangerous, is people hit the brakes to take the dip, to turn right onto Otter Point, or to turn north onto Otter Point Road.
The actual curve around Otter Point Road there?
As you drive, the surfacing takes quite a dip. It's quite deep.
That would be, that would be transitioned out.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you.
So the transitions would be looked out as part of this?
Yes, they would.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Dunlop. The, my question is, again, this is fairly, I mean, it's quite complex, not fairly, through that midsection in there. Is the groundwork still being discussed as part of this, like our drainage system? And that, the question is through the chair to you, Ms.
Is the groundwork? We are including drainage works in the, both the roundabout project as well as the sidewalk project. We do have some preliminary reports that indicate some of the drainage needs to be replaced on Suk Road, and we will be looking into that as well. While we are including that, it'll, of course, depend on budgets and that, but...
Yeah, I would just hate to do such a beautiful big roundabout, and then we have to go dig it up a couple of years later, because there's floods or something. The other part is, there seems to be some extension on the south side of that blue, there's a blue line going down the middle of Suk Road towards the, by the Church Road. I don't recall that on there before.
The section?
Yeah, the section, yeah, right there. Yeah, what's that about?
That's just the left-turn lane.
Oh, that's the existing left-hand turn lane?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it changes slightly because we are widening the road there to add a proper bike lane and stuff, so.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay. Thank you very much. So I guess our suggested action then is just to receive the report, is that correct? Ms. Brinkley?
Yes.
Okay, so if I may have a motion to receive the report? Moved by councillor Parkinson, seconded by councillor Loggins. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. And just to back up to number three, sorry, I missed that, that the action there should be to receive that report as well. So if I, and for the mayor to attend the meetings until the council has its strategic planning session. Moved by councillors. Moved by councillor Parkinson, seconded by councillor Berger. Any discussion on that? All those in... Thank you very much. So I guess our suggested action then is just to receive the report, is that correct? Ms. Sprinkling? Okay, so if I may have a motion to receive the report, moved by councillor Parkinson, seconded by councillor Logan's. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. And just to back up to number three, sorry, I misthought that the action there should be to receive that report as well, so if I, and for the mayor to attend the meetings until the council has its strategic planning session. Moved by councillor, it's moved by councillor Parkinson, seconded by councillor Berger. Any discussion on that? All those in favor? Opposed, motions carried. Thank you very much. And so our last piece here on page five is the council committee structure. So staff has put together a report here that just goes over our various committees that we have, the structure that we have, and also the policies for the committees, and then at the very end, page forty-seven starts, is the various community committees, societies that we also have in place. So over time, over the years, council has formed liaison relationships with a number of different organizations throughout Suk. Now, some of them, there is a requirement that we have, and partially, like one of them is the Tamuk Treaty Advisory Committee, the other is the Victoria Family Court and Youth Justice Committee, as we contribute some funding to those by the CRD, and there's usually membership from all over the CRD. And there's different entities that we also have funding, and we've created the liaison appointments to. Some are active and some are not. So there's roughly sort of an update here, and Ms. Sprinkling has updated the schedules as she know it and the various contact appointments. So something to think about here is just the liaison roles, which ones does council want to continue having? Are there others that we should look at adding, and which ones may be of interest to you? So it's not a decision that you need, that we need to make at this time, but I think it was timely that council has this. And then again, as we roll forward into our strategic planning session, we can see where they all fall. And if there are any that you are interested in, then just shoot me an email and let me know, and we can see how that looks. So questions about the committee structure? Sorry, I'm stuck between new and old technology here. It's councillor...
So this isn't for these committees, but for the housing trust? Do we have information on what day that meeting is, seeing as that's what I was appointed to?
So those are the CRD ones, and that commission, because I was sat on that one myself for six years, it was at the call of the chair. So there was never a set meeting schedule, and it always changed sort of from year to year, depending on what worked for the group. So what'll likely happen is, for those committees, probably this month, is you'll receive contact information for the CRD ones, and then when you have your inaugural meeting, the membership at that time will likely decide what is the best fit for that group. So I don't think there was, aside from the groundbreaking for the Hope Centre, there wasn't, I think there was only one meeting last year, actually. And sometimes they go monthly, it just depends on the number of applications, but there is a lot coming down the pipeline for that particular commission. And so same with the other ones, the climate action one, the various water commission, water distribution, you'll likely now that holidays are over, you'll start receiving emails from the staff to let you know when they are. But some of them are call of the chair. Yeah. Councillor Ray?
Yes, I was just reviewing the community committees that are listed on page forty-seven and forty-eight, and the one that I had taken on the last term was a Protective Services liaison, and I don't see that. I don't know that it was a formal liaison, but former mayor Milne had me in that role.
Yep, so that one is a district or a council committee, so these, like, these are liaisons to outside. So that one then also evolved. It's like the Community Grant Committee. That one was suspended for a while. So I'm looking at the Climate Change Action Charter Committee, the Community Grant Review Committee, there was the Community Centre Public Information Committee, and then an Emergency Planning Committee. So Protective Services had actually evolved into the Emergency Planning Committee in 2012, so that must have been, that's ended up being where...
Yeah, no, I wasn't on that. I just, it was a liaison role with the fire department and the police department.
But that's where it became the Emergency Planning Committee, I believe? No? It's the, Ms. Sprinkling?
I believe that the mayor at times requested certain council members to liaise to different agencies and bodies, and that might have been just an informal request that councillor Ray performed that liaison with the firefighters.
And that could kind of be like the Bike Park Steering Committee, liaison to the bike club, we're sort of informal on that one as well. Councillor Pearson?
Well, it's funny, it was because you told me about this today, and I was kind of looking through there, and some of these ones that are in here, I guess my question is, is there value in having them here? It says currently not meeting, chair will call meeting as necessary. No, no set schedule, have not met in some time. You know, there's several of these that are, I guess, do we want to put names to these, or what are you looking for? I guess it's kind of my question.
At this time, it's just for information.
Okay.
So again, it's something to think about, because once we set our priorities, there's going to be committees that are going to come out of those outcomes. So you also want to consider the amount of time, because some of these groups meet at the same time. And so that's why we wanted to get clarity on the meeting schedule, and then also, as we roll out our priorities as a council, then I think you need to fit in where the other ones were. Some of them may be the case where, you know, it's nice to be, it's a nice exchange of information, so for say, the museum, for example, there's a nice flow back and forth, but it's just, as you sit there as liaison, what do you intend, like, what do we intend to accomplish? How do we bring that information back to council, rather than just having minutes in a binder in the council, you know, in the council room? Is there a better way of having a dialogue as to what's happening at these? And I think a lot of them are also formed just to try to, so is there a way of duplicating or eliminating duplication, or to bring all the various community groups together? So how do we look at doing that? And some of them had service contracts, but then we have liaison to some with service contracts and not liaison to the other ones, so why some and not the rest? Do we need all of them? And what is the best way to stay engaged? So it's kind of, I brought it here, something to think about, how can we move forward with this, and then really, what is the best way? And then also, some groups, the meeting times change, that didn't work for the councillor that was appointed to it, so that was a challenge for some as well. And it doesn't mean that we've abandoned the group, it's just we're physically challenged with the meeting time. But the ones that I think we do need to think of, you know, and there's still time, are the ones on page seven, sort of looking at two, there's the current select committees, and that's where there's the Climate Change Action Charter Committee, it's sort of midway down the page, Community Grant Review Committee, Community Centre Public Information, and that one now will likely evolve to a more post-election type of role, because we received through the referendum questions, support to keep rolling, so that one needs to sort of redefine itself. And then there was the Emergency Planning Committee. Councillor Parkinson?
On the list of the community committees, you have the Victoria Family Court, Youth Justice? Is that not CRD?
It is, but it didn't come through the formal appointment list, but it is a CRD committee.
Okay. So there's already appointment to that one?
There is not.
Oh, there's not?
No. But when staff received, you know, at our inaugural meeting, I believe, they had already received, those committees from the CRD had to roll out and had to be defined, so those ones rolled ahead, but for some reason, this one never fits that first list. Councillor Ray?
Yes, I was the liaison for the youth and family. And so for, I provided Mayor Tate with information that I'm no longer able to attend that. So some of the meetings, or some of the positions we had in the past may not necessarily work now during this term, so.
Any other thoughts or comments from other councillors? So it's just something to take with you, give it some thought. For those that have you that have served as liaisons before, think about what worked and what didn't work. Are there appointments that we need to add? Is there something to eliminate? And I think we just take this as information for now. Aside from the ones on page seven, perhaps, if you want to think, well, even then, I would think about it, then when we form our priorities, we can funnel the rest out. So at this point then, I'll just get a motion to receive the report for information. Thank you, councillor Ray and councillor Parkinson. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion's carried. Item six is public input on the agenda. Is there any one present here today that has a few comments for council? Please remember to push the red button. Thank you.
Hi. Welcome, all of you. Nice to see you all here. I just have a question. That slide that you just had up there with the road? I don't know if this has been dealt with, but on, in Suk, you must know, there's so many driveways, so many driveways, and that's a part of the problem with making it walkable, because every time you cross over one driveway, you cross over another driveway, over another driveway, it's constant. So there's, there's ways of changing that, because there's, for instance, let's see, just trying to think of a place, the gas station, Chevron, the driveway coming out, people could go out onto Church Road, so you get rid of that driveway. There's, you've got two driveways coming out of where the, oh, what's that called now? It's where they have the weights and all this exercise place, place I don't go. But in a way, there's two driveways there, but it could actually be one driveway with two cars going, or one, two ways in there. But by reducing the amount of driveways, that would all, then you put sidewalk instead of people stepping, you have to stop so many times for cars. It's, that makes it a hazard, and I think that's part of it not being very walkable. If you walk it, and with that in mind, and you'll see there's various places that can be changed, and you might want to talk to your consultant about that, to see where they can actually close some of those driveways up and divert the traffic off of there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lors. Is there anyone else? On that note then, we'll take a motion to adjourn. Seconded. Thank you councillor Parkinson and councillor Logan's.